I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, October 21st, 2019. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us Pastor John Bernie of the Cumberland Community Church at 3059 South Cobb Drive, who will come forward at this time and give us our invocation and also lead us in the place of flag. So would everyone please rise?
Mary bow our heads. Our Father, which art in heaven, we thank you for the opportunity to come to do your will. Father, we ask for the blessings upon those you have set apart that they might understand what you would have them to do and be with them and guide them, Lord, in governing this community, that they might look to the hills from which cometh our help and that they might move forward in your word. Let your will be done in them and let it be done in us, that we might be able to serve and to be served, or it's in the precious name of Jesus that we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, one nation under God, in the Bible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And for those folks, 3059 South Cobb Drive, Cumberland Community Church, I'm sure if you're new to town and want to make a change or just go by for a visit, I'm sure they'd love to have you. Thank you so much tonight for coming by and doing the invocation. Agenda changes, we do not have any under three is the mayoral report. 2019-339 is a proclamation recognition from National Friends of the Library Week, October the 20th through the 26th. Ms. Wilkinson, who chairs the library committee, Ms. Wilkinson, I think there may be some folks from the library here, they look like library people on the front row, so Ms. Wilkinson.
Yes. Do you want me to read this first or go down there and read it from there with them?
You can read it up here like we do, then you can take it down there and present it to them.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. This is a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna for the National Friends of Library Week, where as Friends of Smyrna Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And whereas, the work of the Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. And whereas, the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas, the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now, therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim October 20th through the 26th, 2019, as Friends of the Libraries Week in Smyrna, Georgia, and urge everyone to join the Friends of Smyrna Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better.
Mayor, if you want to come up and bring your folks and introduce them. Single file, boy, girl, boy, girl.
We have the majority of our board here this evening. Charlie Standard is our board president, Gigi Walters is our treasurer and secretary, Marvin Patterson is our assistant chair, his wife Anne is, Anne Borders Patterson is our secretary as well, and then we have Ellie Wolf, Louisa Cohn, Mary Ann Marchioni, and Bill Marchioni, all of them contribute in many ways such as the Art Committee, membership, and other activities, and they make my job so much better and make our library very strong, and I appreciate them every day. Thank you.
Mayor, do you want to say something?
Well, I'll say, Charlie, did you want to say something about the Friends?
I think he prepared a little bit.
You know, on behalf of the Friends, we get our recognition from Mary telling us about all the wonderful things that happened, especially with the children's programs, you know, 150 children and 4,000 books were read, and that means they weren't doing this with their cellphones, which is obviously a good thing. So, and I think also, I think you ought to recognize, you probably do, but this library is really a jewel. It's something that makes this community special, you know, this is one of the better communities to live in, and I think the library goes long ways toward making that so. So, I mean, that's all I want to, it's just a great thing, and we work hard, but we enjoy it.
And let me just say this while y'all are up there, because some people will not remember all this as we go through life. One of the biggest assets that we have as a city is to have our own public library. And this place today would not be what it is today had it not been for our public library, and I'm going to tell you why. When we started doing the downtown, there was nobody here that slept except me, so I'm telling you, here's the way it was. We were able to do what we did and to dedicate the library and the community center August the 3rd, 1991, because of the library. We didn't know whether or not our community was ready to endorse a community center, but we knew that they were 100% behind the library. We had about a 5,000 square foot library that was busting at the seams, so we figured this. And Gordon Mort might remember, he's maybe the only one. They're not going to say nothing about your mama, and they ain't going to say nothing bad about the library, and that's the reason why we are here, and we appreciate all the folks that have given up their time. And I'll tell you this, the Friends of Library has been strong for years and just continues to get strong, so thank y'all so much for the time that you've given back to your community. That's one thing that I would never give up and hope that in future leaders, because we've been approached a few times about going in with the Cobb County Library, and it's not a bad thing, but I think we do pretty good, but it's because of volunteers like yourself that give back to our community, so thank y'all very much. As a gift, y'all don't have to stay unless you just want to. Item four, land issue zoning and annexation, A. 2019-305, public hearing zoning request, A. 19-012, rezoning from neighborhood shopping to GC with conditions for use as a special event center, 1.84 acres, land lot 381, 652 Concord Road. Drew Earring, that was enough, Earring. Will you please give us the background, unless I know the advocates here, so give us the background, Scott, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. For those that aren't familiar, this is the former Crafty Hog or Howard's before that. The proposed special event center is expected to average 60 events per year with an average of 175 people. This has, spot has 105 parking spaces that will not change to current use. PNZ, Planning Zoning Board, recommended approval by a vote of 6-0, and Community Development also recommends approval.
If applicants step forward, this is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to, or they would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning change? At the record show, there is none. This is in Mrs. Blackman's district. Ms. Blackman.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Mr. Earring, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. Well, I know about your product and what you do, and you're a great chef and all that good stuff, but can you share with us and our audience as well, and the council, more information about your business?
Yeah, specifically the new business? Well, a little bit of background, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I appreciate the audience. I've been a Georgia resident for 35 years and Atlanta chef for 27 years. I've owned my own catering business for almost 17 years now, and also a full-service restaurant for about five and a half. It's been a dream of mine to be able to purchase commercial property, to have the opportunity to open a special events facility specifically geared towards Atlanta's wedding market. I've been in the industry for a really long time now and feel that it's a successful venture, it could be a successful venture for me. What I'm planning to offer is sort of a value-priced, driven event facility experience. The Atlanta's wedding market generates over a billion dollars a year to the local economy. It's a thriving wedding market, and there is a, I believe, a shortage of event facilities in the city that are available. Currently, people book facilities up to two years out to be sure that they're able to have the space that they want for their event, and I'm very excited about it. I also wanted to speak a little bit about the fact that I realize that there's two other prominent event facilities in the city of Smyrna that also happen to be owned by the city of Smyrna, and I also wanted to let the council know that I feel that I would be able to enhance the sales and refer sales to those two event facilities as well. You know, all three of the facilities would be different sizes and I feel would cater to different clientele. You know, one thing is that I feel that, you know, a lot of times when somebody does a wedding at a specific location, that they also feel that they want to do the rehearsal dinner in the same location as well, so I feel that that would be a very easy referral for me. And also, to be able to refer dates that I currently would already, would already be booked, so I appreciate your consideration and am a proud property owner in the city of Smyrna, and this is a business that I hope to be able to own for my entire life and to be able to pass down to my children as well.
Great. Well, I know that the council has more questions for you, but I'm going to ask Rusty if he'll come forward and kind of give us a little bit more of the background here on this, and then we'll bring you back, okay?
Good evening. I'll just give you a little bit more background on the property and the surrounding area, just to add to what Chef Drew's explained to you. This property is located at 652 Concord Road. It's on the south side of Concord Road near the intersection of Old Concord. It's a former restaurant facility. Chef Drew is proposing to turn it into an events facility where they'll hold special events and parties and such. The requested rezoning is from neighborhood shopping to general commercial. The future, the future land use designation for the property is Community Activity Center. There is no need to change this activity center, the requested zoning is a compatible zoning district. If you look to the north, you have moderate density residential across Concord Road, to the east and south, our Community Activity Center, and then to the west where the fire station's located, it's, it's got a future land use of public institutional. This is the existing survey of the property. The existing restaurant building will remain. I believe he's proposing to do some interior renovations and some exterior renovations, remove the sand pit and some of the play areas that were at the front of the property. With this request, the full access drives on Smyrna Hill Drive and Concord Road will remain. The existing restaurant building will remain in its location. There'll be front yard improvements, and then there's 105 parking spots that will remain, and as part of our recommendations, we're recommending that they be restriped so they can be clearly seen. This is the subject property, and then you have your adjoining properties to give you some context. Community Development recommends approval with the following conditions. Number one, the building's fire alarm system should be brought into compliance with local and state fire code requirements. Number two, a life safety plan shall be submitted to the city fire marshal to determine occupancy load for the building and for the proposed use. Number three, the parking lot should be restriped prior to the issuance of business license. Number four, inspection analysis of the grease trap in kitchen hood may be required if cooking equipment is maintained. Number five, the grease trap shall be replaced with a 3,000 gallon grease trap. Number six, the applicant shall remove the non-conforming freestanding pole sign or bring that sign into compliance with the city's current sign ordinance. Number seven, the applicant shall plant street trees along Concord Road for the length of the property frontage. The trees shall be planted with a minimum spacing of 40, 40 linear feet between trees. And finally, number eight, this is a recommendation from the city's planning and zoning board during their public hearing, they recommended adding some prohibited uses to the subject property due to it moving up to general commercial with more allowable uses. So they want to prohibit, I'm not going to read all these, they're all in your agenda packet, but basically adult entertainment pack, entertainment stores, anything really to do with automobile sales and cleaning and repair, billiard parlors, boat sales, drive-in theaters and drive-in restaurants, and motorcycle sales, mobile home sales, different types of uses like that. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you, if you guys have any.
Rusty, you said that the grease trap needs to be replaced?
Yes, sir.
And what is currently there?
I, I believe it's a 1,500 gallon grease trap. Yes.
And you're requesting it be double that size?
Our infrastructure supervisor from Public Works reviewed the existing conditions out there and is requesting for the kitchen service and everything that goes along with it, that the grease trap be increased to 3,000 gallons.
I'm, I'm just curious, because I don't know, Engine Two Crafty Hog was the last restaurant, and they were required to upgrade to 1,500. I mean, I assume, I don't know, somebody...
I'll let our Public Works director...
That just seems like doubling it is...
The code is...
Come on, Frank, come on.
To my knowledge, environmental inspector Paul Osborne, he went out and took a look at it. To my knowledge, the code, when they change hands, it has to be upgraded to conditions of 3,000 gallons, which is required now.
And, and who requires that?
Our ordinances do.
Some were grandfathered than previously, Mayor, but when it changes hands, I believe...
Exactly.
I mean, I'm not hitting any conversation with anybody about this, but that seems like going from 1,500 to 3,000. Seems like, I mean...
I think the issue is based on the occupancy of the building when it changes from a restaurant with a defined seating area with specific number of seats versus a events facility that may have more occupancy and more kitchen use.
Seems like excessive. I'm just...
Next question, Mayor.
I, I understand what you're saying. Has there been any discussion regarding the leaving this grease trap in with the owner, new owner?
As far as I know, Corky Paul took a look at it, and this was his recommendation, was to...
It's simply based on the ordinance, yeah, okay. I, I mean, here's my way of looking at it, I guess. We had a full-time restaurant, and I realize that we, the occupancy probably went up based on this, but we went from a six-day-a-week service to a one, two-day-a-week service, and, you know, we're probably taking on less grease than what we are now, or what we were before, but that's, you know, if it's in the ordinance, I'm going to leave it alone.
How often does the grease trap have to be emptied? Are you talking about 1,500 to 3,000?
I'm not sure of that, Max, but I can find out, but I'm wanting to say it's, I know EPD requires a grease separator at our place once a year. Same grease separator, once a year for us. I don't know about commercial.
Every three months.
I'm just curious, what's the, what's the cost to replace, to 1,500 to 3,000?
Eighteen thousand dollars.
Well, this, that's obviously something I guess staff needs to work out. It, it, just from a layman, it seems like an awful big grease trap for somebody that's not going to have the same amount of business as previous restaurateur, and, I mean, nobody said anything to me about it, it just sort of just jumped up at me. Okay. Let me see if there's anything else that jumps up at me. I miss first time I've met this guy, he's not said anything to me about it, I'm just saying. Okay.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor? So, on the, it might be a question for a chef, so you have a certain headcount that you expect to have in the building. Have you had a conversation with the fire marshal to have some sense if you're going to be able to have the capacity that, that you need to make it work?
Definitely. Deputy Fire Marshal Tim Grubau came and visited the space, walked through with me. I'm currently, currently in the process of trying to obtain a building permit to do the renovations that I'd like to do. The life safety plan certainly came up in that conversation. I'm waiting on the review notes and comments from the fire department at this time to see what they, their comments about attaining a certificate of occupancy. I felt like that, that Mr. Grubau was very pleased with what he saw at the walk-through.
What, what occupancy are you hoping for?
Well, you know, it's, it's, there's a difference between the legal occupancy, you know, the, currently, the legal occupancy of the building as it stands with the size that it is and the way that it was drawn before with the Crafty Hog is 340 people. I would never imagine that I would do events of that size. I really think that, that that's too large of a group for the space. You know, with, with a wedding scenario, people like to have the flexibility to do the ceremony in one side and then do the cocktail hour on the other side while the ceremony space is being turned into the reception room, so, you know, with that many people, I wouldn't be comfortable, I personally wouldn't recommend a client, if they were interested in doing an event that big, I don't think that they'd be happy and comfortable. I really foresee probably the max would be about 250, and that's, to me, really pushing it as far as the comfort of the space and the comfort of the experience. And I would love to talk more about the grease trap if I have an opportunity.
Yes. Next question, Rusty. Procedurally, if we approve this tonight, and there was some opportunity for him to come back and ask for a variance, would that be the procedure?
Yeah, yeah. We, I mean, if we get into the review of the plans and the analysis show that he doesn't need as big of a grease trap as what's required, then yes, he can formally come back and request a variance from that, I would assume.
Okay. Thank you.
And Rusty, do we know how long this building's been vacant?
I want to say just over a year or just under a year, more or less.
The building fire alarm system shall be brought into compliance with local and state fire codes. Okay. All right, anyone have any other questions? All right, Ms. Blackman.
Thank you. Well, at this time, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve 2019-305 zoning requests of Z19-012 rezoning from NS to GC with conditions for use as a special event center, 1.84 acres, land lot 381, 652 Concord Road, and Drew Earring.
Motion second to approve this zoning request with no stipulations noted. Any other questions, comments, all those in favor of the motion? Let's approve 60. Thank you very much and good luck. Item B. 2019-306, public hearings zoning request, A. 19-013, rezoning from LI to RHR-PD for the development of 65-unit age-restricted senior living community. That says a 24.8 units per acre, that's correct. 2.62 acres, land lot 381, Smyrna Hill Drive, Presque Land Holdings, applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. The background.
Thank you, Mayor. Many of you are already familiar with Preswick and the community. This proposed senior housing unit will be limited to persons aged 62 and 62 years of age or older and would be rental units. The site plan provides for 61 total spaces. The site will be accessed from Smyrna Hill Drive via full access drive on the east side of the building. The Planning Zoning Board unanimously approved 6-0, and Community Development also approves.
This is in Ms. Blackman's district. Ms. Blackman.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Rusty to please come forward and give us more information, please.
All right. Preswick is requesting to rezone the property from light industrial to residential high-rise planned unit development for the development of 65, for a 65-unit independence senior housing development. This is not an assisted living facility, these are independent units that will be occupied by persons 62 years of age or older. The subject property is LI, the adjoining properties to the north and to the west are neighborhood shopping, and then to the south is neighborhood shopping and general commercial, and then to the east is LI as well. With this request, the applicant is proposing to change the, the future land use plan from Community Activity Center to high-rise density residential. This is the proposed site plan. As you can see, the, the building is pulled up to Smyrna Hill Drive, and the parking is located at the rear of the site, and we'll, we'll walk through the site. This is gonna be a four-story building, and it'll move down, downhill as, as it deals with topography as you move to the east. They'll have the following minimum setbacks: a front setback of 12 feet, a side setback of 20, and a rear of 30. With this request, the unit composition is 41 one-bedroom townhomes and 24 two-bedroom townhomes. With this proposed development, the applicant is also applying to a state program to address housing affordability. It's, it's a tax credit program. With that, 11 units will be restricted to, to people that can afford approximately housing at 50% of the area median income. 43 units will be at 60% of the area median income, and 11 units will be market rate. There will be a full-access drive at the, at the east end of the property next to the detention facility. And then there is an existing stream buffer that runs through the site. There is no encroachment into the undisturbed area and no encroachment into the impervious surface area setback. This is the location of the stormwater detention facility. And then with this request, they're proposing eight parallel parking spaces along Smyrna Hill Drive, along with a five-foot right-of-way dedication and a five-foot sidewalk. With this request, there is only one variance request, and that's to reduce the front setback from 50 feet down to 12 feet to pull the building up to the road and locate the parking in the rear. This is the proposed building elevation. And then pictures of the subject property. And then adjoining properties. Community Development recommends approval of the requested zoning from GC to residential high-rise planned unit development at a density of 24.8 units per acre with the following conditions. Standard conditions from Section 1201, dealing with number 2, 3, 4, 8, 10, 16, and 17 don't apply to this development, but the remaining do, and those deal with the composition of the building. Number two, screening of the detention facility and making sure that it meets the, a 10% reduction in a 100-year storm event. Number three, requiring the utilities to be underground. Number four, the developer shall be responsible for any traffic improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. Number five, the entrance in the facility should have brick or stamped pavers for a distance of 20 feet. Number six, no debris shall be buried on the common area. Number seven, they shall install decorative streetlights. Number eight, the developer shall comply with the city's current tree ordinance. Number nine is all landscape plans shall be prepared by a Georgia-registered landscape architect. And 10, all yards and common areas are to be sodded and landscaped. In addition to those standard conditions, we are proposing some special conditions. Number one, sets the setbacks that were requested on the site plan. Number 12, requires the developer to meet all fire access requirements from the fire marshal. Number 13, requires the developer to be responsible for all water and sewer improvements deemed necessary by the Public Works Director. 14, requires the developer to meet all the requirements of the stormwater management ordinance and any improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. 15, the trash dumpsters shall be screened appropriately and have rubber tops. And 16, the use of low-intensity type lighting shall be required for the parking area. 17, the zoning of the property shall be tied to the site plan submitted. 18, the zoning of the property shall be tied to the building elevation submitted. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Before we open it, Rusty, I'm not sure if I ask if there's any one that wanna make public comment. This is a public hearing for this rezoning. Okay. Anybody got any questions, Rusty?
I have one.
Ms. Blushy.
Building, an elevator?
Yes, they'll have to meet all ADA requirements, and I'd imagine that's gonna require an elevator within this building to, to get people from the bottom floor to the top floor.
You mentioned about the stream buffer. Where's that stream at?
It's on the east side of the property. If you can put the site plan back up. It, it's on that eastern boundary line. You see that straight line that goes, um...
And, and that's actually a stream? It's not?
It's a blue line stream.
Does that mean, what does that mean?
It means it's a recognized waterway. I mean, it's the start of that stream. It's the headwaters for that stream.
Is that a stream because there's, above it, there's water that drains off of it and goes into a ditch? I'm just curious. I've never-
No, there, I, I, there's no head wall reflected on that plan. It's showing the water's coming from the north into that. It's just, it's the headwaters for the, the stream that go underneath Smyrna Hill and go south.
Okay.
What you're saying is the state says it's a stream, so it's a stream.
The state has their requirements for a stream. It doesn't always mean that it's gonna have water in it all the time, but if it has rested vegetation, then, then they classify it as a stream.
Whether we like it or not.
Any questions, Rusty?
Um, I do. I, I thought I heard you say, mention townhome, but are these gonna be flats, more of a, this, the-
No, these are apartment units, so yes, they'll be-
Okay. I think, I thought I heard you say townhome, but maybe it was just a mistake, but it's, so it's gonna be like a flat. Everything, each unit will be on one level?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Rusty, on the front, front setback variance, so the topography's a little challenging, is that why?
Right.
We're getting a request for the front setback change?
Yeah, and we're, and staff asked them to move the parking to the rear of the park, of the property, so it's screened by the building and all the other commercial property on the north side, so you don't have parking between the building and, and the, in Smyrna Hill.
Uh, one more time, Rusty, explain to us about the, um, the breakdown of the stream buffer. I'm over that. The makeup of the citizens that can live there. You said 40%? It was a 40% rule, and this is affordable or assisted-
This is affordable to somebody making 50% of the area median income. So, somebody that's making 50% of the area median income, which the last time, I think, we, we, the last census was $61,000 for the area median income. So, it would be affordable to them at 30% of whatever, whatever of that 50%. Basically, if it's $61,000, it's $30,000, 50%, and then they're gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be affordable to them at 30% of-
So if they make over $30,000, they could not qualify to live there, right?
More or less, yes.
I mean, 31, whatever it is. And then there's another percentage-
There's another one for 60%.
So it, so it seems like all but, all but 10%, if I read it right-
Right.
The rest of it is unrestricted, so-
Yes.
I can live there regardless of how much money that I make.
Right.
I just wouldn't get any subsidy, subsidy, right?
They'll do a better job of probably explaining that than I have, but yes, it's, it's marketed to help subsidize people that aren't making near as much as, as the area median income.
All right, good to. Any other questions, Rusty?
I, I have one. Rusty, I just wanna ask this question, and I know we've talked about it, but I wanna put it on the public record. I've got one instance of this tax credit property in, in my district, in Ward 1 with Gallery Manor, and there've been some, some problems over the years with them keeping up the property and things like that. What, what kind of enforcement mechanisms do we have in place to make sure that the property is kept up? You know, even in years, not for the current owner, but you know, if it's sold down the road, or?
Right. They will, they will ultimately, some of this will overlap, but they will have to do third-party inspections of 20% of the units every year for the city of Smyrna, and that's to do every time business license renewal comes around. So they'll have a party that'll do an inspection for the units and make sure everything is in compliance, and they'll submit those inspections to the city. On top of that, which they may, they may have to do, they will have to do for the tax credit program through the Department of Community Affairs, is they'll have to submit inspections to them as well. I don't know what their threshold requirements are, if they have to do all of them every year, or if they have to do a certain percentage. But yes, they will, they will have another set of inspections that they have to deal with, with the state as well.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rusty. I'd like, the applicant, if you'll please step forward. I need to be sworn in, Scott.
Evening, Marion Council. Chuck Young, I'm owner of Preswick Development Company. Also a Smyrna resident the past 11 years with my wife Kathmin, our two kids, who are at Griffin and Campbell. Thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. I could talk literally for an hour on this project. I will not, so don't worry about that. But just wanted to share a little bit. It's a $14 million project, 65 units. Rusty already did a great job going over some of the details of the plan. It is age-restricted, 62 and older. There will be elevators in the building, for sure. We've done handfuls of these all over across Atlanta. They're highly amenitized. This is a, this project is a direct result of the city's efforts on the Georgia GIG community and the Smyrna Charms, Smyrna Housing Group, and so, and fortunate enough to participate in that as a resident. So excited to be able to implement some of that vision here with the city, should it be approved tonight. Also exciting that the, I believe it's the future landing point of the, the comp plan shows for some density at this intersection of South Cobb and Concord, this node, and this could be a really exciting first piece of all that. We do green buildings. We're on, it'll be EarthCraft certified. Amenities include wellness rooms, business centers, community gardens, community rooms, onsite laundry, fitness room. We do preventive healthcare, excuse me, preventative health care screenings for residents, healthy education programs. As far as, you know, you wanna quit smoking, things like that, we're, we're there to help. We do fun stuff, birthday celebrations, movie nights, exercise classes, all that. We agree with every one of the staff recommendations and think it would make for a great project, and happy to answer any questions you have of me and Preswick on our project.
Chuck, thanks for being here. Great project, I think. I'm so glad that it's, you know, part of the whole GIG program and the Smyrna Charms. And of course, it fits right in line with sustainability, because you are a green community, and I, I really appreciate that. One of the things that I was thinking about is you're right across the street from Sparkles. So have you given any thought to that whole situation with that business being right across the street from this development? Possibly any disturbances, things like that?
As somebody that frequents Sparkles, I hope to have some seniors go over there and do some roller skating. But yeah, I mean, there's no, you know, the seniors do like to get out. I think it could actually be kind of a, kind of a fun thing. I don't, I don't see any disturbances. We're over there a lot. I think, I think it could be great.
It could be part of their activities.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I, I've never seen you at Sparkles.
Do you go on? Well, I go during council meetings.
Mr. Mayor, a question. There was some discussion in our, in our work session regarding the 62 years of age. And I guess the concern is that, let's assume I'm 62, not quite, but I'm 62 years old, and I move into the facility, and suddenly I have two grandchildren that move in with me. Is that permitted? Is it not permitted? What's the, what's the ruling that I guess they're to keep, keep this as a senior 62-plus community?
Sure. 62 and older communities are, it's not permitted to have any children living onsite, period.
Probably not permitted, then?
They're not permitted.
Okay. I'm assuming if you go to Sparkles, you must have a child in elementary school, then?
Uh, sure. Yeah, no, I do. We've had plenty of fundraisers there for Nikah Jack Elementary.
There is one with the question that Councilmember Welch just asked, but in, in a situation where that 62-year-old may become the guardian for a child or children, how, how are you going to figure out that balance? How's that gonna work? Is there gonna be any type of rules set in regards to that?
So every year, they do have to recertify with income and, you know, proof of age and everything else. And so if they have, they have to have children living with them, you know, they're, they'll have to locate in a community a lot of the 55 and older communities would allow for kids, but 62 and older, you can't have children living on the property. So we would certainly help them find a new place to stay, and we have 55 and older properties that we could talk to them about reloading to, but they could not stay at this one if it was 62 and older.
I'm sorry, how, how often do you say they have to recertify their?
Annually.
Annually, okay.
So annually, that's the, that's the mechanism, how it would be identified if somebody under 62 is living there?
Yeah, and we have, so property management, of course, I mean, 65 units is not a very large community, so there's basically one pointing in and out of the building, so we have plenty of staff onsite that that would be recognized fairly early. So it wouldn't even, that's when you would, you know, technically see the problem, but you would, you'd pick up within a week or two if something-
Right.
Was going on, for sure.
So your company plans to own this property for at least how many years?
30 years.
Is, is that the, that's the length of the financing?
Yes.
So Chuck, thank you for coming tonight, and I have a question. Just about, I guess, a week and a half ago, I received a call where one of the tenants of an apartment complex in Ward 5 was having to move because her rent was going up $200 more a month. Is there any priority given or any opportunities for people that are, are already living here in Smyrna to be able to move into the complex from when, because that's what we're facing in some of our apartments now, so?
Sure, and one of the reasons I'm excited about this one in particular is because I know we hear the story a lot through some of the, you know, GIG community presentations and things. So when we, when we are under construction, there will be signage up and ways for folks to sign up for an apartment while it's under construction, and then certainly we can make sure through social media outlets and things that folks are aware of the opportunities, so they can absolutely get on the waitlist to go ahead and move in. You know, unfortunately, there's such a huge demand for these things, it could-
So how many's on your waitlist now? So definitely, my point is, if they're getting on the waitlist, it might not be-
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll, we'll start it probably about three, four months before we open the waitlist. But, and, and certainly, that, that would be great as, you know, the folks that are, that are being pushed out by some of the properties that don't have to limit their income and their rents, that we'd have that opportunity for them to be here.
Okay, I'll let them know.
I would defer to our legal counsel that if, can we, I would think it'd be difficult for us to put anything in there to, with their financing, but could something like that be done?
Well, I mean, it sounds similar that the concern's already addressed. I mean, and for practical purposes, right, you've got, I mean, you've got a land use restriction, right, that you're gonna have to have, which is filed in the courthouse and deed records, and then you've got requirements, financial requirements, right? And then you will have the zoning stipulation. So I mean, we've covered it. I think that issue's covered. will have the zoning stipulation. So I mean, we've covered it. I think that issue's covered about as well as it can be covered.
Well, my question was, though, was Ms. Wilkinson's issue with giving Smyrna, current Smyrna residents first option, or somewhere in the pecking order where they'd get a?
Yeah, I don't, I think that's dangerous to try to tie that to a rezoning. I mean, I think just the market will be what it is, as far as, I mean, these people by definition will be Smyrna residents once they live there, right? And so the idea of giving local people preferential treatment, requiring him to give that, I just, I don't, that seems like just a mess to me.
I just don't want there to be any misunderstanding that, you know, that we're adding something that we can't and ought not, and get ourselves in trouble, or mislead the public that, oh yeah, you get first right, you know?
But at the same time, I mean, what I hear you saying is that Smyrna residents will have the same, existing residents, they'll have the same opportunity as anybody else.
That's correct, and practically speaking, they'll see it before anyone else will.
Yeah.
We don't typically have to go out and market this widely to places outside of the communities that we're building in. It does, the majority of the residents are from the local community.
Okay, thank you. I just, you know, I'm just interested in making sure we're addressing the issues in our community when people are having to move out of the apartments that are here in our community because of the rents. But anyway, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I could, oh, sorry.
Well, the next question, I was going to say, what is your anticipated, you know, construction time and opening time?
We'll apply for our financing. You can do that once a year, and we'll find out about a year from now if we have the financing or not. And so we'll call it first quarter of the following year. We'll be under construction.
About 18 months?
Yes, sir.
Have you purchased the property yet?
We have not.
Do you have it under contract pending approval of the financing?
Yes.
Okay. Could you run through the income requirements relative to what somebody would pay, so for the 50% of the average income level and such and such?
Sure. So the ones that have restrictions on them, the rents are between $650 a month and about $985 a month. And then the 11 units that are not restricted, they will go for whatever market gets for those units.
What kind of income would somebody have to qualify?
It's adjusted by household size, so if it's a senior that's single or a senior couple, it can range anywhere from, a single-person household will range somewhere just over 30, like Rusty said, and a two-person household can get closer up to 50 plus. And then if they're going to one bedrooms or two bedrooms, their rent would fall within that range that I described earlier.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, what, Chuck, when did you say? 18 months?
18 months from now, so we're done with construction, yes.
Okay, any other questions? All right, with that, Mayor, I would like to propose item 4B for approval, 2019-306, zoning request Z19-013, rezoning from LI to RHR-PD for the development of a 65-unit age-restricted senior living community at 24.8 units per acre, 2.62 acres, Land Lot 381, Smyrna Hill Drive, Prestwick Land Holdings LLC.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion? I just want to say this, I'm looking forward to this, but it does concern me, it might be two years before you get your financing, before y'all even get started on this project. Okay, just a comment. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approve 6-0. Item C, under Land Issues, Zonings and Annexations, 2019-364, public hearing approval of subdivision plat with variances for lot area and front setback, 0.46 acres, Land Lot 378, 2900, 2930, South Cobb Drive, 2900, South Cobb Drive LLC. See applicant here? Okay. I'm gonna get Scott Andrews to give the background, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This property is currently plotted as one on the records officially. However, the commercial retail center and the out parcel are addressed separately. This property's already developed and functions as two separate uses, each having independent access drives and required parking spaces. So Mayor, in all attempts, this is basically a little housekeeping to formally record the lot as a two-lot configuration.
Okay. The applicant's here, if you'll please step forward. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this approval of this subdivision plat? If the record show, there is none. This is in Ms. Wilkinson's district. Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Rusty Martin to come tell us about the-
All right. This is a plat approval with a couple variances for 2900, South Cobb Drive. The P&amp;Z board heard this request at their last meeting on October 14th. They recommended approval by vote of 5-0. The total property for 2900 is approximately 4.3 acres. There is a shopping center along with an out parcel with a Smoothie King. With this request, we are formalizing the Smoothie King out parcel. It is currently reflected on a tax records and has its own tax ID number. On Smyrna GIS, Cobb GIS, it's reflected as its own parcel. But there is not a formal subdivision or plat showing that it's been formally subdivided. So that's why we're here today. There'll be no change in the zoning district, so it'll remain GC. Here's a survey of the subject property. Yes, we're talking about the little out parcel on the southeast corner of the site. The minimum setbacks for GC are front 50, side 10, and a rear 30. With this requested subdivision, they're proposing for two variances, one to reduce the front setback from 50 feet to 40 feet. The existing building for the Smoothie King encroaches in the front setback by 10 feet. And then they're requesting a reduction of the minimum lot area from today's standard, which is one acre, down to approximately a half acre. This is a picture of the subject sites. So you got your Smoothie King in the upper left-hand corner, and then the retail center in the lower right-hand. And then some adjacent properties in a view down South Cobb Drive. Community Development has reviewed this request. As Mr. Andrews stated, it functions as its own separate lot, has its own access, its own parking for the subject use. Community Development is recommending approval and formalization of the subdivision into two formal lots of record. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Martin? Thank you, Rusty. Mr. Sams?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, my name is Garvis Sams of the law firm of Sams, Larkin, Huff, and Bally. And just like Chuck, I could talk for hours on just about anything, but I won't. We do have staff's recommendation for approval on this, and planning commission's unanimous recommendation for approval. Mr. Martin did a good job of teeing it up for you. This particular shopping center, if you're familiar with it, for a long time, it had NAPA that was in there, but now that's been replaced. We have four suites in the overall shopping center itself. There's three tenants, so there's some available space that is there. The Smoothie King itself, I didn't know this until last week, is the highest volume Smoothie King in the metropolitan Atlanta area. I don't usually buy $8 milkshakes and that sort of thing. So I've not been there, but everybody else it seemed like in the city of Smyrna has. My clients have owned this property. It's Mr. Priggin and his corporate entity, 2900, South Cobb Drive, since 2002. And they've run it well. They've utilized it appropriately. Three years ago, the Smoothie King came in as a tenant, a build-to-suit type circumstance, following the Smoothie King prototype. They've operated very successfully there for three years. As was mentioned, this is two separate parcels in terms of the tax commissioners looking at it. But in essence, as Mr. Andrews said, this is a housekeeping, but I don't want to, I don't want to relegate it to something of non-importance, because it does have two concurrent variances, one of which we think is rather minor in terms of the as-built setback. The other one that we have, sounds major, but if you think about it, it's not. Typically, your GC classification requires a minimum 20,000 square feet, but in the South Cobb Commercial Corridor Design District, it's a full acre that's required. And that's interesting, because the entirety of our shopping center is only 45,000 square feet. And of course, this has been here for some time. So it's really not, considering what GC typically requires, this thing is properly zoned, it's not as drastic of a variance as it may seem. Plus, when you look at variances, you're looking, number one, at hardship. We think the configuration of this property and its positioning, coupled with the fact that this is not going to set an adverse precedent, or we think impair the purpose and spirit of the ordinance. So we think it's appropriate for those two concurrent easements. As a part of the handout that you've got, you'll see the last pages are a reciprocal easement agreement that I have prepared, in which Smoothie King, the purchaser, assuming this happens, and of course, 2900, South Cobb Drive, they want to make sure that there are provisions regarding interior maneuverability and accessibility, both with respect to pedestrians and with respect to vehicular connections between the two parcels. As Mr. Martin mentioned, Smoothie King in and of itself has its own requisite parking. In fact, it way exceeds the parking that's required. So we're not asking for any parking ratio waiver at all. The planning commission recommended approval. We haven't heard of any opposition. We've notified everyone in Ms. Wilkinson's district, as per the regulations in terms of those who either have contiguity or adjacency to this. I've not received any phone calls. I'm not sure if Ms. Wilkinson had, but I've not heard of any in staff. I don't think has received any. So we would simply ask that you follow your planning commission and your staff's recommendation for approval. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Sams at this time?
Very brief, very concise, great job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Leave it alone.
I don't hear that often. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, at this time, I'd like to move to approve item 4C, 2019-364, approval of subdivision plat with variances for lot area and front setback, 0.46 acres, Land Lot 378, 2900 and 2930, South Cobb Drive, and then 2900, South Cobb Drive LLC.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approve 6-0. You still have time to go get a smoothie. Thank you, Garvis.
Thank you.
Item D, ordinance 2019-20, public hearing approval of ordinance 2019-20, for code amendments to the city of Smyrna zoning ordinance, appendix A, Article 4, Section 402, Article 7, Section 712, 714, 716, and 720, to include wineries as permitted use in the general commercial light industrial, central business district, and mixed-use zoning district. I would assume that the city is the sponsor of this, so can you give us the background?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. The summary of this is wineries weren't previously defined within the city, and the city's zoning ordinance is silent on it. Community Development has worked to define that. So the city has recently updated the zoning ordinance to include breweries and distilleries, so this is falling in line with that, to define wineries. Wineries fall under a separate classification according to State of Georgia Code. Community Development is proposing code amendment to the zoning ordinance to identify the zoning districts where wineries can be permitted. This was recommended approval by planning and zoning, and of course, Community Development also approves.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this ordinance code amendment? If the record show, there is none. This is Mr. Tim Gu. Mr. Gu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rusty, do you mind sharing just a little information about this very interesting change to our ordinance?
Yes, and I'll be real quick. Scott handled the summary very well. Basically, staff has been working with a winery to locate here in the city of Smyrna. Our code is silent on it, so we need to include it to the list of permitted uses within certain zoning districts. And that's what we're proposing here today. We're basically proposing to add the definitions to clarify what a winery is. And as you can see, they're identified up there in the different types of wine and what definition of wine is. And then we are proposing to add wineries to the list of permitted uses for general commercial zoning district, light industrial zoning district, central business district, and mixed use. Right now, that's what we're proposing, because a year ago, we made the recommendations to add breweries and distilleries in those districts as well. So, and you may be asking, why are we allowing them in CBD or mixed use? And that's because you do have these craft brewers, winners, and vintners, and distillers that make, you know, stuff that's not made for wholesale distribution, but for just general package sales. So it fits within those districts. They're at a much smaller scale.
And we have a, somebody who's interested in opening up a mead winery, if that's the term for it?
Yes, we do. And they are looking at a location over on Junkwell Drive. He's here, if y'all have any questions about wineries and what he does with his business. But this is the First Amendment. I have another item on tonight to deal with the licensing requirements under the alcoholic beverage ordinance.
Any questions for Rusty? Thank you, Rusty. I wouldn't mind having the applicant come up if he doesn't mind.
Want to see the applicant?
Oh.
Hello, my name is Robin Cosaurus. I'm one of the owners of the Viking Alchemist Meadery. That's a DVA, by the way. Our actual name is Arcane Adventures LLC. What would you like to know?
Do you have, you do have a similar business somewhere else?
We're currently operating in Marietta. We have 1,500 square feet, which we thought was going to be more than enough. We were wrong. And we've been operating, well, we rented the place in January of 2015. It took all year to get licensed, so we actually opened for business in March of 2016. And we've been operating there since. It's a production winery officially. We make mead, honey wine, as well as cider. We strive to use local or, you know, strictly Georgia products. All the honey we purchase is from Georgia. All of the apple juice for our cider is from Mercy Orchard, actually, in Georgia. So as much as possible for, really for good business reasons, as well as being Georgia-centric, I guess, we try to stay as close to home as possible for our- I guess, we try to stay as close to home as possible for our ingredients. We have seen revenue growth of approximately 60% year over year, which is why we have desperately been looking for a new home for the last over a year. And we found it here. It's 4,000, 4,000 square feet and building on Johnquill Drive.
Great, good. Thanks for thinking of Smyrna.
Funny thing about it is that I, I wasn't thinking of Smyrna. I looked at a couple of places here and the prices were rather breathtaking, so I thought, I'm not going to be able to touch that because of the stadium and all the things going on here. So I was looking Marietta North, and the property just came to us. Somebody stopped by the meadery and found that we were looking for a place and mentioned they knew something. And considering everything I went through trying to find a place and all the lack of success we're having, this just went bang, bang. So I mean, perhaps it's cosmic, but it's, it's falling into place, especially the trouble I'm causing Rusty with showing up to ask for a winery license and there wasn't any. And then he's got to put in zoning ordinances and alcohol ordinances, and we're a farm winery, so I just started kicking with that one, too. So I think I probably, probably made his life as difficult as I possibly can. And I apologize for that.
I just mentioned tonight, I mean, I'm excited about y'all starting your business here. I think it's going to be great. We want this to be a smooth transition from the very beginning to the end. As a matter of fact, I just might just track your whole deal to see how quick we can get this, so I can, so we can get more wine in our city, so.
I, I appreciate that. I guess we're the first craft alcohol business coming to Smyrna, so.
Good deal.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So just, what, what is your timeline?
I should tell you that we're a small company that's growing fast. I'm running to keep up, is what it comes down to. We have way overgrown the space that we're in for our production. So our plan is, is to get licensed. We, excuse me, we have a federal license. We, we need a city in order to go get the state.
Right.
Right. So I'm hoping to have all of that in place by the end of the year and be able to move our production. So I've actually been working with Anthony Carter, I believe it is, your building inspector, to kind of phase one would be to just get our production moved over in the back part of the space for production, and then start to work on the plans to upgrade the space as a tasting room. We do tasting and pouring, package sales, all the various things you'd expect to see in a craft alcohol. So we're trying to work out the, the phase, and I want to move from where we're at in January. I would like to be able to soft open in February and have our fourth anniversary at the end of March here. So that's what I would like.
And, and we're on Johnquill Drive is the building?
As you're heading down Johnquill, you know, you've got Rev Coffee.
Right.
So you go down, you hit a stop sign, and then you keep going, and then there's a, a small industrial park.
Right.
So you've got the first building that's got the gym, the, what is it? CrossFit, that's what it is. And then the next building over, that's where Roberts, Fire Supprider, Ruben Roberts owns the place, so. So the next building over, and a huge parking lot, great location. It's, it's just really nice for what we do.
Yep, good, right.
And what was the name of the company again? I didn't hear it.
Oh, I'm sorry. The name, the official name of the company is Arcanum Ventures LLC, but we do business as the Viking Alchemist Meadery.
Say that again, Viking what?
The Viking Alchemist Meadery. It's a cool name.
It's got the horns and the hat.
We do have a hat with horns on it, yes.
Any other questions?
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So hearing no other questions, I move to approve item 4D, ORD 2019-20, Approval of Ordinance 2019-20 for Code Amendments to the City of Smyrna Zoning Ordinance, Appendix A, Article 4, Section 402, and Article 7, Section 712, 714, 716, 720, To Include Wineries as Permitted Uses in General Commercial Light Industrial, Central Business Districts, and Mixed-Use Zoning Districts.
A motion second to approve this ordinance amendment, code amendment. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Thank you very much. Item E, Ordinance 2019-22, Public Hearing Approval of 2019-22 for Code Amendments to the City of Smyrna Zoning Ordinance, Appendix A, Article 5, Sections 501 and 503, Pertaining to Fencing Requirements. The background, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. You covered a great deal of the background there, but this focuses primarily on the, the finished side of the fence and which way it faces. In summary, so the current fencing requirements do not address which way the fence should face. So this will define that. Planning and zoning, approve this. Community Development has reviewed the city ordinance with respect to fencing, is proposing code amendments to create a new fencing section and to eliminate the fencing requirements from Section 501. Maybe Rusty will get into a little bit of the three provisions there, and that is the background, sir.
All right. This is, this is a public hearing. Is anyone here in opposition to, or they would like to make any public comment concerning this code amendment to our City of Smyrna Zoning Ordinance? If the record show there is none, again, it's Mr. Tim Guo. Mr. Guo.
Thank you, Rusty. Would you mind filling us in on some details?
No problem. I'll, I'll walk through this pretty quick. As Scott stated, the city's fencing requirements aren't consolidated in one section. They're found throughout the ordinance, so you got to look in different articles and chapters to, to find those requirements. There's the, the definition is found in Section 402, and then the, the side yard provisions for fencing and, and street side requirements are all found in Section 501. Our proposal is to consolidate all those requirements into one section where the citizen can find it and easily understand what's required of them with respect to fencing. And then finally, we heard while we were going through this amendment a year ago, that we wanted to, that the citizens and council wanted us to address the finished side of a, of a fence and determine what that is. So we've, we've proposed some, some wording for that, and we've provided some pictorial representations of what that code means. So the First Amendment is to remove the side yard requirements for fencing from Section 501, and we'll move this wording down to Section 503 here in a second. So the next proposal is to create Section 503 under Article 5, and the first requirement is, and this is already an established requirement, is no fence shall be more than eight feet in height or be constructed in a public right-of-way. Section 503A.2 states all, in all cases, the finished side of a fence shall be, shall face adjoining properties and/or public rights-of-way. For public purposes, or for purposes of this section, the finished side shall be defined as a side of the fence that contains no visible support structures unless approved by the Community Development Director. And that's to address any decorative fences that may have a horizontal support or may be a two-sided fence. It's just to give, give the director discretion to approve those fences without having to formally become, come before mayor and council. And then we provide examples of what we mean by the finished side of the fence. And then other examples of what we mean as far as the unfinished side of a fence. And then finally, Section 503A is the wording from Section 501, which deals with fencing on a corner lot. Within any front yard, and in parentheses, it says, "Front yard shall also include a corner lot in which both yards but any street shall be deemed a front yard. In all zoning districts, no chain link or similar woven wire fence shall be permitted. However, within a front yard in an aforementioned, aforementioned district, a decorative ornamental rail, split rail, picket, opaque, basket weave, or similar fence constructive wooden or vinyl materials may be permitted, provided the said fence does not exceed four feet in height. Columns comprised of brick, stone, or similar material may be placed between fence sections in the front yard, but still cannot exceed four feet in height. Decorative wrought iron or black aluminum fencing shall also be permitted, provided the said fence does not exceed four feet in height." So this, this is dealing with the part of the yard from the front face of the house to the public right-of-way. You're allowed a four-foot fence, or if you're on a corner lot, the side of the house to the, to the public right-of-way is a four-foot requirement. And then everything behind the house is allowed to be an up to an eight-foot fence. And then also with this, we're proposing some examples of what we mean by decorative fence. This is not all-inclusive. This is just examples to show you sort of what we're, the intent is supposed to be. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I think fences are one of the things that probably take a lot of your time to figure this in details, but it does impact a lot of people, and everybody has an opinion.
Yeah, I mean, fencing is an issue because we don't require the issuance of a permit for it, but we do have code requirements that set limitations on the fencing. So unless a resident calls us and asks us what those requirements are, a lot of times they, they may not meet them, or they may be in violation of them. So yes, we do spend quite a bit of time with code enforcement issues, trying to correct those types of issues.
Or even just creating the ordinance and updating it and doing it right and...
Right. So who, you know, we'll create an info sheet with this that we can hand out to the residents that hopefully makes it a little bit easier for them to understand, or obtain it off our website if that's what, how they choose to get it.
Thanks for all your work, and I know it took, took a lot of time to make it happen.
No problem.
Any other questions? Mr. Guo.
So with that, I move to approve item 4E, ORD 2019-20, Approval of Ordinance 2019-20 for Code Amendments to the City of Smyrna Zoning Ordinance, Appendix A, Article 5, Sections 501 and 503, Pertaining to Fence Requirements.
Motion second to approve these amendments. Any other discussion? All those in favor. It's approved 6-0. Item 5 is previous licenses. We have none. Item 6 is formal business, A 2019-381, Approval, Approve a Bond Resolution, Bond Purchase Agreement, and Related Documents Authorizing the Issuance of Its Refunding Tax Allocation Bond, Atlanta Road Corridor Project Series 2019, in a principal amount of $12,725,000, and authorize the mayor or the mayor pro tem to execute all documents incident thereto. Mr. Andrews, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is exciting news. So in 2003, when the Atlanta Road Corridor Tax Allocation District was formed, Cobb County assessed it at roughly 73.6 million. Today, that stands at roughly 252 million. So this is exciting. So what that does is the, the success of this project allows the city to refinance this at much more favorable terms.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What Scott also failed to mention is that it saves the city substantial amount of money and shortens the term of this, this bond payback. Do we want to call it, Mr. Morton? Do we need to?
Mr. Morton?
If you would give us a...
Does he need, we need to swear him in, Scott?
If you would give us just a brief explanation of the benefits of this refinance.
The benefits of this refinancing flow both to the county and to the city because both of you, the increment on the property created from the 73 million to the 250 million, and that's fair market value. The assessed value is 100 million, 23 million, 29 million to 101 million. The, the county shares in that because it has its M&amp;O millage on the increment that contributes to this, and the city has the same, and it's about equal millage. But the city actually gains about $2,900,000 in, in savings, and the savings results from shortening the debt. Okay, so the debt, if we didn't do anything, the, the debt would be around to, here, probably 2039. By doing this, it's going to shorten it to February, if everything goes as planned, February of 2032, which means the last tax increment that will be collected for these bonds will be tax year 2031. And that results in about, these are round numbers, but about $3 million to the city and about $1,400,000 roughly to the county. The reason the county's is less is their commitment to this funding only went through 2033, so where the cities went to 2039. So it's, it's been a long time coming, and the success of this had, it's almost textbook case for how it's supposed to work and how you putting a little public money into a project gets you from a Walmart, a Super Walmart on that site down there, which was what was originally proposed by the developer to what you see today. And it's pretty incredible and gets a lot of comments, positive comments from people visiting the city.
Thank you. I felt very good about this before, but I, I just didn't want you sitting out there with nothing to do tonight, so. Mr. Mayor, I, I do support this. I, I won't say it sounds too good to be true, but it, it, it sounds very good. Anytime we can save approximately $3 million, it's a benefit to the city. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 2019-381, To Approve a Bond Resolution, Bond Purchase Agreement, and Related Documents Authorizing the Issuance of Its Refunding Tax Allocation Bond for the Atlanta Road Project Series 2019, in a principal amount of $12,725,000, and authorize the mayor or the mayor pro tem to execute all documents here, here incident thereto.
A motion second to approve this bond resolution. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item 6B under Formal Business Ordinance 2019-21, Approval of Ordinance 2019-21 for Proposed Text Amendments to the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverage, by amending Article 1, Section 6-2, and Article 2, Section 6-34, 6-37, 6-45, 6-46, 6-61, 6-62, 6-118, and adding Section 682 related to the licensing of wineries. Mr. Andrews, the background, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. A few minutes ago, you heard what staff has done. They had identified wineries and went back like we did a year ago with breweries. So since that has now defined what staff then dug deeper is, this is the licensing of that. So Community Development has looked at Cobb County, Marietta, and made sure that they're competitive with the surrounding areas, municipalities, and the code language here will identify the licensing for wineries, and Community Development moves approval.
Mr. Tim Guo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. Rusty, if you have any comments?
Yeah, a lot of these requirements track the brewery and distillery amendments we made a year ago. I can go through them real quick for you and just show you, basically everywhere we added a brewery, we also added winery to be allowed in those sections. There is one section, I'll be really quick with this for you. We added the definitions, then we added a type of license for winery, and then we dealt with adding wineries to this list of places that places limit, limitations on related package sales. We added... We added wineries to those requirements, as well as these other sections that deal with drinking on premises and package for carryout purposes. And then we also added wineries to a subsection that deals with the established hours of operation, as well as Sunday sales. This is the section I really wanted you to see. This is the new section dealing with wineries. Subsection A, wineries shall be licensed by the state of Georgia and operate in accordance with all state laws and regulations. B, wineries may not sell any alcoholic beverage except wines that are produced at the facility or produced at other facilities owned by the same winery. And C, wineries may not hold a separate pouring license. And then we go to Section 118. And that sets the distance requirements from certain locations, such as your churches, public schools, residences, public parks, stuff like that. And then 124 deals with exempted licenses for the pouring requirements. And finally, in the next item you'll see is establishment of the fees for wineries and breweries. And this proposed amount will cover manufacturing, package sales, and tastings. So it'll all be encompassed at $1,700, which is comparable to other municipalities and also other alcoholic beverage licenses that we issue within the city.
Thanks. Thanks. I appreciate your group being flexible and nimble, so to speak, to help a business come to the city and making reasonable adjustments to our ordinances to allow that to happen.
Mr. Robin will be here next week for the formal request for the alcohol license so he can proceed to getting his state approvals. I think we've been working with him and we've either issued building permits for him to do his improvements or we're really close to issuing those permits. So everything's working in the way that it should. And hopefully he's satisfied with the way we handle business. And he's happy to move here.
Good. Thanks, Rusty.
Time is money, Rusty.
I understand.
So with that, I move to approve item 5B, ORD 2019-21. Approval of ordinance 2019-21. Excuse me, sorry. Item 6B. 6B. Approval of ordinance 2019-21 for proposed text amendments to the City of Smyrna's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, alcohol beverage, by amending Article 1, Section 6-2 and Article 2, Sections 6-34, 6-37, 6-45, 6-46, 6-61, 6-62, 6-118, and adding Section 6-82 related to the licensing of wineries.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item 6C under formal business, 2019-378. Approval to amend the City of Smyrna fee schedule for community development for licenses to include a fee of $1,700 for wineries and fee of $1,700 for breweries. I think we just went through that.
Not really background there, sir.
I'm going to turn this back over to Mr. Welch for council's approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to bring Rusty up here for this. We just went over it. This is simply a procedural issue where we're approving the fees for the wineries. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6C, approval to amend the City of Smyrna fee schedule for community development for licenses to include a fee of $1,700 for wineries and a fee of $1,700 for breweries.
Motion second to approve these fees. And that's in line, Rusty. We're not way out there. Just yes from just...
No, sir. We're not way out there. We're close.
We're close to being way out there?
We're close to other municipalities. I apologize.
A motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item 6D, 2019-380, approval to amend the fee schedule to include an impound fee of $100 for the shareable mobility devices removed from the right of way and a $5 a day fee storage. You want to tell us something about that, Scott?
Sure. Many of the residents or some of you may have even seen some of these scooters. They find their way to Smyrna and they end up here. So what you see with these, the $100 impoundment fee and the $5 per day fee, those costs associated with the recovery will cover the cost of the officer collecting, transporting, and the time for processing the scooter into evidence and the $5 a day for storage and paying for the space required.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as it reads, we're simply trying to prevent people and/or companies from dropping off scooters in Smyrna and going against our ordinance. If they do, there will be a $100 impoundment fee plus $5 per day. I'll make a motion to approve item 6D, 2019-380, approval to amend the fee schedule to include an impoundment fee of $100 for a shareable mobility device removed from any right of way and a $5 per day fee for storage.
A motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item 6E under formal business, 2019-367. Approval of the 2020 Employee Insurance Providers and Plans and Authorize the Mayor to Execute All Related Documents. Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. Every fall, the city reevaluates and selects its insurance plans and providers for employee benefits, such as medical, dental, vision, life, short-term and long-term disability, flex spending. So this is just the city offering to, wanting to make recommendation to proceed with medical insurance, Blue Cross Blue Shield, dental and vision through Guardian, and life in short-term, long-term through MetLife.
Ms. Black.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure we don't need to do any more discussing as we already have done. And Kay Bolick, HR Director and Staff, have done a good job in making sure they vet and get the best insurance providers force. So with that, I'm going to ask for approval of item 6E, 2019-367. Approval of the 2020 Employee Insurance Providers and Plans and Authorize the Mayor to Execute All Related Documents.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item 6F under formal business, 2019-359. Approval to award RFP 19-009, water sewer modifications for Windy Hill Boulevard to the lowest bidder RDJE Inc., located at 679 Highway 29 South, Noonan, Georgia, 30263, in the amount of $4,276, no, $4,276,185.50 to be funded from reduction in the FY 2020 Water CIP transfer from the Water and Sewer Fund 505 and use the Water CIP R&amp;E fund balance and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents and amend the budget accordingly. Mr. Andrews, the background, please.
Public Works requested bids for the 2016 splash for Windy Hill Boulevard project, water and sewer modification improvements. Ten contractors purchased the bid plans. Two bids were received. RDJE Inc. was the lowest and is the recommendation of Public Works purchasing and engineering to move forward.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Frank, do you have anything additional to add to this? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this is the first construction, essentially, in the Windy Hill project to remove and replace the existing water sewer along that roadway. I'm very happy to see it finally come before us. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item 6F, item 2019-359, for the approval to award RFP 19-009, the water sewer modification for Windy Hill Boulevard to the lowest bidder RDJE Inc., located at 679 Highway 29 South, Noonan, Georgia, 30263, in the amount of $4,276,185.50 to be funded from reductions in FY 2020 Water CIP transfers from Water and Sewer Fund 505 and the use of Water CIP Renewals and Extensions Fund balance and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents and amend the budget accordingly.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item 6G, Resolution 2019-05. Approved Resolution 2019-05, a resolution of the City of Smyrna reminding restaurant owners of their ability to prohibit smoking. Mr. Andrews, the background.
Thank you, Mayor. The Georgia Legislature adopted the Georgia Smoke Free Air Act in 2005. In 2014, the City of Smyrna, recognizing that prohibiting smoking within the city was better for the health and safety, welfare of residents. So what this does is remind restaurant owners, in fact, that they have the option to prohibit smoking.
Mr. Corky Welch, who chairs the Finance Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to read this resolution just for the record. That's Resolution 2019-05, a resolution of the City of Smyrna reminding restaurant owners of their ability to prohibit smoking. Whereas the Georgia Legislature adopted the Georgia Smoke Free Air Act of 2005, and whereas the state law specifically provides that owners of restaurants may declare the enclosed areas within the entire facility, as well as the outdoor area of the facility as non-smoking areas. And whereas, in addition to the state law, in 2014, the City of Smyrna recognized that prohibiting smoking within city-owned facilities protects the health, safety, and welfare of the public, adopted an ordinance prohibiting smoking within any indoor or outdoor public facility, subject to certain exceptions. And whereas, the result of the state and city laws has been to reduce or eliminate smoking from most public areas and private businesses, including restaurants. However, a few restaurants have elected to either offer smoking areas or be designated as a location where smoking is allowed. Now therefore be it resolved that in an additional effort to better the health and welfare of the community, the mayor and council of the City of Smyrna do hereby remind all restaurant owners that they are legally able to prohibit smoking and encourage those who desire to prohibit smoking to do so immediately, resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Smyrna this the 12th day of October 2019.
I'm sure Corky, you're going to make a motion second. I'd just like to just add that I think we've done a lot that the Georgia Smoke Free Air Act of 2005 allows all managers, proprietors, owners of restaurants and bars that if they don't want smoking, they could have cut it out. 2005, that would be almost 15 years ago is when this act was created. And we have about five. All this is just to remind them that, hey, you have the ability. If you don't want smoking in your establishment, it's up to you. And if they want to stop it, they can stop it. Corky, you going to make a motion?
I would. I'd like to say something before we finish. Mayor, if I may. I just want this to be on the record, that I'm happy to see that the mayor, council, and city recognize in the form of a proclamation the overwhelming evidence that demonstrates that smoking bans protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. This state law also gives local government the authority to be more restrictive. Giving this acknowledgement and the overwhelming evidence in the form of dozens of studies that prove smoking bans in public and private areas dramatically reduce health-related issues, I believe this should not be made a voluntary act through a proclamation, which does not carry the weight of an ordinance. We must act to protect our residents, visitors, and their families from secondhand smoke. To limit this protection is to continue to put the health and safety of innocent restaurant workers, patrons, and their children at risk. We can make this proclamation a mandatory ban by simply changing a few words in paragraph 5 and making it an ordinance. And I would like to also make sure that it is entered into record, this official position from the CDC that says, quote, "Exposure to secondhand smoke from burning tobacco products causes disease and premature death among nonsmokers. There is no risk-free level of secondhand smoke, and even brief exposure can cause immediate harm." Studies have shown that smoke-free laws that prohibit smoking in public places like bars and restaurants help improve the health of workers and the general population. And some of these improvements in health outcomes, such as reductions in hospital admissions and for heart attacks, begin to realize shortly after the laws take effect. Again, this law also gives local government the authority to be more restrictive. And cities like Atlanta, Savannah, Athens, Snellville, Gainville, Mauro, all have the welfare of their community at hand. And furthermore, if we can pass T-21 to protect the health and welfare of our students, I think we should be able to do the same with a non-smoking ban. Thank you.
Mr. Welch, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6G, Resolution 2019-05, for the approval of Resolution 2019-05, a resolution of the City of Smyrna reminding restaurant owners of their ability to prohibit smoking.
Got a motion second. I just want to add this during discussion. July 19 of 2018, I appointed a Clean Air Ordinance Review Committee, chaired by Corky Welch, Andrea Bluestein, and Ron Fennel, who went over our ordinance, the state law, and they came back with a recommendation that basically the state law allows proprietors and managers, every one, and I'm going to name them, Atkins Park, The Tavern, Timbers, docks. every one, and I'm gonna name them, Atkins Park, The Tavern, Timbers, Dox, and did I say Barners? I say Barners. And maybe, I'm not sure about the Moose Lodge, whether or not they allow smoking or not. They can stop the smoking right now. All I gotta do is say no more smoking, and they won't do it. Other restaurants have. But we have got state law that will allow them to do it. So I would hope that everyone would support this ordinance. We got a motion second, during discussion. All those in favor of the motion. That's approved, five to one, with Ms. Blackburn opposing the resolution. Item H, 6H, 2019, that's 397, approval of Ward Five appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Camma Mannion. This is a two-year term that expires December 2021. Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to move to approve item 6H, approval of Ward Five appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Camma Mannion, two-year term to expire December 2021.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion. Approve 60. Item I, 6I, 2019, that's 375, approval to abandon a small strip of land consisting of 0.0185 acres adjacent to Windsor subdivision on Fontaine Road and the East-West Connector that is no longer needed for surface water drainage and convey whatever interests the city has in the property to the adjacent owner, Weekly Homes LLC. The background, Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Mayor, you pretty much covered the entire background there with the agenda title. Again, this is .0185 acres, and this will just be deeded to David Weekly Homes. So that is...
Mr. Welch, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. This was a small strip of land that ran perpendicular to Fontaine Road that was at one point a drainage easement and has become obsolator and is no longer needed. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item 6I, 2019-375, for the approval to abandon a small strip of land consisting of 0.0185 acres adjacent to Windsor subdivision on Fontaine Road and the East-West Connector that is no longer needed for surface water drainage and convey whatever interest the city has in the property to the adjacent property owner, Weekly Homes LLC.
Have a motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion. Approve 60. Item J, 2019, that's 384, approval for the city to paint no parking on curbs in Cooper Lake Place neighborhood.
Thank you, Mayor. Two areas of Cooper Lake Place have been designated as no parking by the HOA Board. These areas create a blind spot for oncoming vehicles and cause safety situations for those traveling in the area. The Cooper Lake Place Board of Directors has requested that the city paint no parking on the curbs in these areas.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some months back, I received a petition from the HOA at Cooper Lake Place requesting that they be allowed to designate their curbs within the development as no parking, with the stipulation that they do this using painting on the curbs instead of signage. I worked with the city attorney on this issue to determine if this could be enforced. He ruled back to us as a council that this could be enforced by the police department. And, you know, we have a petition on file. I think there's some, I would say thirty-some-odd names on the petition. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve item 6J, 2019-384, for the approval for the city to paint no parking on curbs in Cooper Lake Place neighborhood.
Have a motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion. Approve 60. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Mr. Andrews, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Sir, thank you. Item 8A, 2019-368, approval of October 7, 2019, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, 2019-369, approval of the October 7, 2019, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, 2019-361, approval of the October 3, 2019, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item D, 2019-371, approval for Atkins Park Tavern to extend premises for the Smyrna Oyster Fest, January 24, January 25, January 26 of 2020, during hours of operation. Item E, 2019-391, approval to allow a road closure along Manson Avenue on November 3, 2019, between the hours of 3:45 PM and 5:30 PM for Neighborhood, Chili Cookoff, and Fun Run.
You hear motion? Approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor of the motion. Approve 60. Item nine, committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Derek Norton.
I have no report this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Your mayor, I don't have any report this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Marilyn Blackburn.
I don't have any reports, Mayor, but I do want to say congratulations to our Parks and Recreation for an incredible event on Saturday for the opening of the new bike park. It is really cool. And say thank you to the Jeanco Cuana's Club for the free helmets that they were giving away, or bike helmets they were giving away. So if you have not had an opportunity to go out and visit the bike park, please do. It is a lot of fun. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
I have no reports, but I wouldn't like to mirror what Ms. Blackburn said regarding the event on Saturday. It was a lot of fun despite the rainfall. And I'd challenge any council person to run that little children's course out there with me on a time basis. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Yes, I was out there on Saturday, too. It's a really cool park, and I encourage everyone to go check it out. And I'll take Corky up on that. So also, I would like to tell about the library news. The library's youth services department will hold a fall festival for children aged three to seven on Thursday, October 24. The festival is a drop-in event and will be in the library's meeting room from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. Participants will be, will make, I'm sorry, Halloween crafts, pin the bow tie to the Mr. Bones, and much more. So, and with that, I yield.
Tim Gu.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Got a couple of quick things. First, Forest Hills residents, a group of them got together to form the Forest Hills Traffic Committee, and we had a meeting a week or so ago. And really, the main goal is to try to highlight some potential safety improvements. And they just, like all our citizens, want to keep their neighborhoods safe and their streets safe and all that. So really thank them for their time and effort. Friday night was a homecoming at Campbell High School, and it was a fun event, beautiful, beautiful night. And the mayor received a couple of nice awards. I guess his Letterman's jacket, probably not his first one, but the newest one. And it looked great, fits well. And it also was honored at midfield with, I think, a jersey and even a Spartan helmet, if I remember that right. So it looks like a fit.
It was a big helmet, I know that.
So it was a, yeah, it was a great night, a lot of fan excitement. And I think we'll get them next year on the football field. But with that, Mr. Mayor, I yield. Thanks.
Mr. Scott Andrews, anything?
Just want to give credit to Community Development for, I know the legwork that went into everything you did tonight. So great job.
Mr. Cock.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Quayle.
Yes, sir. I'd like to let everyone know that we are, we have been voting for one week for advanced voting at our main office in Cobb County. We have one more this week is also available for advanced voting from on Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. And then next week, at the Smyrna Community Center, we will be having early voting, October the 28 through November the 1. And then no voting on Monday, and Election Day is November the 5. Come out and vote. Thank you.
Ms. Teen, anything? Mr. Welch, you got some?
One reminder, Marilyn reminded me of this, the Jeanco Festival is coming up on 26 and 27. So everybody out there, please come visit. It's a lot of fun, a lot of crafts and food to eat, and come out to the city and enjoy it.
We do not have a show call hearing. We got two people signed up, Citizens Input, Susan Wilkinson, 2805 Stone Creek Road reelection is her topic.
Hi, my name's Susan Wilkinson. I live at 2805 Stone Creek Road in Smyrna. I've lived there for 33 years, and I've been serving for two terms on the city council for the City of Smyrna for Ward Five. And tonight, I'd like to talk about a few things that have I've worked on since I've been on the council. When I first came in on the, into office to serve on the council, we were in a recession, and that was in 2012. And the city council that served before me had made a decision to purchase 48-acre apartment complex that was in Ward Five. And the city was in the process of demolishing 95 buildings with approximately 730-plus units in this apartment complex. And so the council was faced with what do we do with the property? And one of the, it was empty for a couple of years, I think, during that recession. And I know at one time, it came before us that a large retail chain was interested in the property. And there was a lot of pressure to have that happen there. But I was very, spoke up. I was a loud voice for the citizens of Ward Five, and I was opposed to that particular retailer coming into that spot. I was not opposed to the retailer coming into another blighted, existing, older, closed-down shopping center, but I did object to them coming in at that location. And the reason I objected is because I felt like that was not the right use to improve or stabilize the surrounding neighborhoods that are existing there in Ward Five. I was a strong voice at that time for the citizens of Ward Five and the neighborhoods around that community. As a result, at that time, the mayor appointed a task force to come up with the best solution for that location, and I served on that board. We concluded the residential...
You just bumped it.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, so we came up with the fact that we felt that residential would be the best use for a halo effect for the surrounding area. Following that, during that time, the city had three residential proposals, and two of them were much more dense than the one that we chose. And we ended up choosing the one that is now 193 or 94 single-family homes on the property in Ward Five. It's, so when we were discussing the proposed development and its potential halo effect, the developer was planning to have the main entrance on Wendy Hill Road. I recommended that for the best halo effect that for the surrounding neighborhood, it would be best that it was, the main entrance was on Old Concord. And they took me up on that, and the main entrance is now on Old Concord. Also, recommended soon after that, that we put in a road from South Cobb Drive at the existing light through to Old Concord to help with the organization of the traffic that was, the chaos that was through this sea of asphalt there, and also help with the pedestrians. And the staff and the city agreed to put the road in with the sidewalks that makes it much safer for pedestrians and vehicles that are traveling from South Cobb Drive to Old Concord in that area. And I think that's also added a big plus to that to Ward Five. So try to be fast here. The community was chosen as the 2016 Community of the Year, and it's proved to be a great asset for that part of Smyrna. I can, I support the continued revitalization of Ward Five, especially the South Cobb Drive corridor and the continued connectivity of Smyrna's multi-use trails on this side of the city and Ward Five. And I'll push to make these projects a priority in the upcoming Splas referendum. For more information, visit my website at SusanForSmyrnaFive.com. And please make sure you vote on the 5. But thank you.
Marilyn Blackburn, Huntington Trace reelection.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I promise I will not use all three minutes. I am Marilyn Blackburn. I am the current city council representative for Ward Three, and I've lived in Smyrna for 19 years, where I have definitely enjoyed spending my time here. But I'm running, and I'm up for reelection for the Smyrna City Council, Ward Three, because I care. And I care about environmental stewardship. I believe that we must work with our federal, state, and local environmental protection agencies to ensure that our citizens are protected via air, water, and soil. Talking about economic development, we must diversify our revenue sources by recruiting businesses that hire locally, pay competitively wages, and are environmental stewards. We can talk about transportation and transit all day long, but we have to be able to work with our county, state, and federal partners when critical infrastructure decisions are being made. And it's important that we do look at transit for Smyrna with our city growing as rapidly as it is. The safety of our citizens is always very important, so it's, it's very important that our first responders are being paid well and trained and equipped to do their job right here in Smyrna as well. Inclusive government, Smyrna's government must reflect the community it serves. I mean, all voices should be heard, and we have to be able to embrace our diversity here. So I ask you to visit votemarylineblackburn.com for additional information on all the wonderful accomplishments that I have done since I have been your Smyrna City Council Representative for Ward Three, and look forward to serving an additional four years. Thank you, and God bless.
That concludes the list of folks that signed up. So if there's no other business to be brought for this body, I clear some meetings adjourned at 9:06. to be brought for this body, I clear some media journal at 9:06.